Evening, everyone. It is August 28th, 2025. It's 7:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Sherburne zoning Board of Appeals. I think the first item on the agenda is a variance. Is that correct for Mr. Littlefield? Which I believe I have to recuse myself for because he is my neighbor times two. So I will administer, I guess administratively, but I will not comment or vote as a board member. Jonathan, does that sound about right? Mr. Fitch?
Well, it sounds, it sounds right to me. I, it's your discretion if you feel that you shouldn't sit. I don't think it's a clear cut.
Okay.
But it's, it's.
I won't vote, I won't vote, but I will participate in the, in the butter's discussion comment period.
Okay.
So, Richard, so the first matter is a variance for an existing non-conforming structure. Mr. Littlefield purchased an old historic home that was part of another historic home in town. And I will say from my, from my perspective, it needed a lot of work. And it looks like he's put a lot of work into it. And he is here to, I think, petition to add a second story. If that, is that correct, Richard?
Yeah, it's a dormer, so that it, yeah, it's about maybe a third of the footprint.
Okay.
Not like wood, yeah.
So are you, so I guess the question is, are you expanding the footprint of the home, Richard? You're just raising the height of the home?
We're raising the height of the home without expanding the footprint. But I should, at the last minute on that application, which I hope you guys have, I drew in replacing the back stoop. And I'd like a little flexibility with that. I'm not even sure I'm gonna do it. But if I do it, I won't, I won't make the existing non-conforming any worse. It may not be, I'd like to have the option to make the change of the dimensions of what's there now. But it should be on that, it should be on the application if you got it.
And do you have, do you have, does it even have any sort of, so is it, is there a diagram or a design of the application, Richard?
Yeah, yeah, oh boy, you've got so much data. You've got the architect's plans and everything.
Do you want me to, do you want me to share it?
That would be great. Maybe a site plan if you have it, and then also the plans. Gene, are you pulling them up or someone?
I am.
You may not have them digitally, Jeanie, do you?
I do. Are you, I scanned it. I'm just trying to get it to come up. And it is not doing a good job.
Do you have them electronically on here?
I think I do. I could, I can.
You could try to share it.
I can try and share it. Let me try and grab them. Let's see if we can.
There it is, I got it, I got it. There it is.
There we go.
Can you see it?
Almost.
Almost. Ah, there you go. That's the plot, plot plan.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
Yeah, there's a detail of that circle. That's where the, those are the two non-conforming sidelines in the house. Yeah, you have to zoom in. But there's another sheet which blows up that circle. Do I not have?
Just for the sake of everyone looking, you can see the sort of the house is tucked into the corner of the lot lines.
It's right here.
Yeah, it should be a 30-foot setback on the side, a 60-foot setback on the front, but it's obviously not even close.
Is that what you need, Richard?
Yeah, that's the, that's the back stoop that I'd like the, the option to be able to, to make bigger. Or, I, I, we don't, I'm not sure I'm gonna replace it. But if I do, I would like the option to make it bigger.
To, to what you've drawn there?
Yeah, to that red line, which.
The red is what you're requesting. Okay, so in addition to the height, you're requesting the red outline as opposed to blue steps that I see maybe inside of it.
There's a deck, a little deck that's on sonotubes and then stairs that go down.
So just to remind the board, you know, I think the standard that we're here to apply is a substantially more detrimental standard, which, you know, essentially means that we are not creating sort of a substantially more detrimental condition. And I think also there's an intensified sort of non-conformity. And I think Jonathan has more tenure on the board than I do with terms of the town's history with these, with these petitions. So, do we also have a height, sort of a picture of the roof line change?
There are some elevations, just, Jeanie, I'm not sure which one they, oh, there you have it, there you have it. Look at that east elevation, yeah, that guy, and scroll up a little bit. Okay, so now we're looking as if you're on Main Street, looking down Zion's Lane. That's what you'll see, that gray is the, is the dormer.
Yeah.
But that, that is, that is the, it's not pushing it out to the left. That is an existing bump out.
Yeah.
That we're, so it's not making it, anyways, that's not the non-conforming side, but it is, it's just, it's just taking the walls up.
Well, you're not increasing any non-conformity with the deck in terms of making it closer to the line that already exists.
Right, that's correct.
Well, that's, seems pretty minor to me, Mr. Chairman. And no, nothing about the addition to the non-conformity, which is a major intensification or certainly, I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. There might be a neighbor here who feels differently, I don't know.
Yeah. Richard, you have, there's a large stone wall, correct? That would, you and the view of your neighbor that would see the expansion of that stoop, is that correct?
They can't see it, no, nobody, nobody can see it.
That stone wall is about eight feet tall, is that right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's like a secret garden back there.
Yeah, very, very charming. So there's no way that your neighbor would actually even see the expansion of the stoop at this, based on the visual, right?
No.
Board members, any questions for the applicant?
Only curiosity, when was this home built?
They say 1815. I haven't really dug down with the records, but it was built on Main Street. I'm not sure what the address is, but there's a house there today. The house that it was moved, it was a wing that was moved off of a, of a house which has since been replaced. And the story is a house that we live in, which is 12 Maple, was another wing off that same house. So it's kind of a sister, sister house to the one we have. So we came on the market, we foolishly bought it.
I feel, I feel a hostile takeover. He's going, and he's going up too, so he's, I gotta watch out, but. So, are there any butters with any questions or comments or concerns? No. I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote, but I am gonna speak as in a butter and just say that I support this project and Richard's rehabilitation of the property, and I have no objections. And so I'm gonna go back to the board and ask for someone to make a motion to vote.
Okay. I move to approve the petition of Richard and Heather Littlefield for a finding under section 240-1.4.6 to construct an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 5 Zion Lane in Sherburne, including the porch shown on the design before the CBA.
Thank you, Todd, thank you, Jonathan. So we'll do a vote, vote by roll. Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Lavi?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
And is Mr. Hammond here this evening?
I do not see him.
Not see him. And Mr. Hammond is absent, so am I, but it passes. So congratulations, Richard, and good luck with the rest of your project. I will try to be prompt with responding to Jean's emails. And you know where to find me if you need a building.
Yes, I do.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right.
Okay, Jean, what's the next item on the agenda?
250 Western.
Next item on the agenda is 250 Western Avenue. Is it a variance or a special permit?
It is a variance.
Variance. Oh, here we go, this, that, this, this fun one. So this is a petition for a variance regarding a lot width that looks to be less than a half inch in non-conformity. I did speak to our building inspector a few weeks ago about this. He sort of gave me the, a brief history. It seems like this may have been a surveyor or instrument error, given that it's less than a half, half an inch, or half a foot. Sorry, half a foot, less than, less than six inches error. So it looks like the lot width is 199.76 feet and it should be 200 to be conforming. And we have, looks like we have the applicants here. So applicants, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for you. So please correct me if I've misstated anything and please let us know, you know, what you are seeking and why.
Well, we don't wanna say anyone is wrong either way, certainly. It's just such a tiny amount. And in looking at other plans that are on record, it didn't appear, you know, plans to scale that, that we were missing anything. So it's, it's hard to tell without, you know, delving even further into it. But we don't feel that something that tiny would be really detrimental to the neighborhood.
So it's a different, it's a little bit of a different standard than a finding. So a variance is a little bit of a higher standard of review than the previous non-conforming structure. And so, what was that, Jonathan?
I said unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and so in this instance, there are sort of, sort of three, you know, criteria. One is that the lot itself is not some sort of weird, you know, really, you know, unorthodox shape that you're trying to get approved. I think that's not, that's not, that's not the condition, that's not, we'll meet the condition of sort of, you know, conformity with respect to the general shape, topography, et cetera. You would have to prove substantial hardship as well as no substantial detriment to the public good. And so I think here, you know, my understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I can have Chris jump on, but I, I believe this may have once been listed as two lots and then maybe it was not listed as two lots. And now you're trying to, you know, reinvigorate the prior finding or prior, you know, two lot designation. Can you just give us a little history there on what sort of what was happening? And what your timeline of when you acquired the lot and what, what, what offices you acquired that lot?
So the, on the deed, the property is two lots. There's lot five that our house sits on, and, and that is apparently where the missing 2.88 inches is only at the 60-foot setback and not for the entire depth of the 60-foot setback. And then there is lot four, which is fully conforming to the zoning bylaws. At some point, the lots were merged. I don't know if that was like a townwide thing or we couldn't really find any information, not on the deed, but I guess according to the town. And we think that that 2.88 inches has to do with that corner. If you're looking at the, the lots, the left corner, because the road curves at that point, just is not quite a 90-degree angle. So the, the shape of the lot changes there versus on lot four. I don't know if you can view that.
Maybe we can see a, a plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think the other one might be better.
Better, okay.
Jeanie, that one.
This one?
No, back down a little bit.
This one?
Yes, I just, yes.
Hold on, let me flip it. There.
I think, I think Chris is, I just, Chris will be coming online momentarily as well, just to help us with some of his history and knowledge if we need it. So, so lot five and lot four, I see.
So lot four fully conforms, lot five, according to the most recent survey, and it was a bit of a shock at the 60-foot setback, which if you would like to see those lines, there is a, a survey plan that we sent in. It's not for the entire setback. And at the street setback, there is extra space on both, I believe. It's just lot five, which is the existing house lot at the 60-foot setback.
And is that, I see, it's just not a totally parallel line to the.
Yeah, it, it curves in because the street curves there.
Yeah.
The Applewood survey, there you go.
And is this, where's lot four and five here?
So this would be our proposal to the, to the planning board for lot lines, just so that we don't have to tear down our garage. But either way, the two lots at the frontage would be the same at the setback in the frontage.
I see.
As it exists now on the deed.
Yeah.
And still fully conforming on lot two.
Can you show me the original plan that you just had up, Jean, with lot four and five before they had rejiggered it? Yeah, and what was, what's the date on that plan?
I believe that's.
It looks like, yeah, I mean, it says 6410. I don't know, that's the flood determination, the plan reference.
When did you purchase the property?
2020.
When, when was the house constructed?
46 or 47, I believe.
So this condition has existed for account, what is it?
A lo, a long time.
70 years?
There's a Coleran-Coleantonio plan that was at Town Hall also, but it's, it's just really hard to see. That's more recent than this, but yeah, these, these lots have been this way for a very long time.
Okay, so you're saying the, the front, so you're saying the front is the 199.76 is not at the street? It is setback from the street where, because of the way that.
Only at the, only at the 60-foot setback. And there are measurements that are a little bit more clear on the survey?
And that's the closest, that's the closest point, correct, is 199 point?
The Applewood survey, yes.
Can, can you see the 60 feet right there?
Yeah. Again, the frontage, you have the frontage, it's just, it's this, it's within that setback that you don't.
Correct, and just on lot one on that plan, but lot five on the original plan.
And lot, okay, and this, in the lot, lot two here, which is what you are hoping to sell off, create and sell, I assume, is.
Sell or build on for ourselves.
Would be a completely conforming lot.
Correct. As it stands on the deed, it's completely conforming to the current zoning bylaws and as it is shown here on the Applewood survey.
Okay.
I, I wonder what Western Avenue looked like in 1946? And what, what the setback was in 1946?
Yeah, probably 10 feet. I see Mr. Kenny has joined and his hand is raised. So Chris, thank you for joining, I appreciate it. If you could just provide any sort of history you have here. We're trying to walk through the elements of a variance here and just sort of establish the financial hardship. So any history you have on the lot would be helpful.
I'll give you my take on it. So the plan that I have, that I think Terry Ryan, the surveyor, was working from for the original subdivision is dated 1956, September of 1956, which was like a revision to a prior plan that created all these lots. So back in the 50s, there was no lot with requirement at the setback line, only the frontage requirement and the area requirement, which this met at the time. So again, back then, you could have built two houses without any trouble. Since then, obviously, the bylaw has changed, and now we require a width measurement in three separate places. As I'm sure the board members are familiar, we have the frontage where we have to maintain a width. We have a setback line from the frontage at 60 feet where we have to maintain a width. And then we have a building line, which is, is another line that passes through wherever the structure sits. And so in this case, the lot, which I think was previously known as lot five and now will be lot one, if I'm remembering correctly, would be short only at the setback line width by three, three plus inches? Something like that, I think, is the, is the magic number?
2.88.
Yeah. Which, I mean, who knows? Maybe when, maybe when this was laid out, it actually met it based upon the old surveyors' tools that were available at the time in the 50s. Maybe it was off and it just wasn't required, I'm not really sure. But did you guys have, did you get a copy of the plan with Terry Ryan's markings about what the actual width measurements are of the current lot arrangement? And if you don't have that, do you want me to send it to you? Because I don't know how to share my screen, but I can send it to you.
Chris, is this it?
No.
It is a copy of the 1956 plan with red penciled text and Terry's signature on it. There it is.
All right, let me flip it.
If you can flip it, that's, I think that sort of tells the story pretty well.
There it is.
So if you see his note down on the bottom side, it's lot four and five are referenced in the Cravens deed. Existing lot width for lot four is 196.82 feet. This is again at the setback line, not at the frontage. And existing lot width for lot five is 202.94. So the proposal that he's making is to adjust lot four to have essentially 200 feet exactly. And lot five would have the 199.75 or whatever it works out to, the balance. So it would be just shy, but it, it essentially makes them as conforming as, as possible with this, with this change.
And the existing, the existing structure would be the non-conforming law, basic?
Correct, the house, the house that exists now would, would become the non-conforming law. The, the new lot would be a fully conforming lot in every way.
Board members, any questions or concerns?
Well, what are the alternatives with the 2.8 inches?
They've got a really big lot that they thought that he bought too. That's the alternative.
Right. The property is described in the deed as two parcels.
Yeah. I will say that I am inclined to grant a variance, but this is a bit of a, in my opinion, this could be on the line. Because, you know, you purchase sort of property, you know, at your own risk, without permits in hand. And this is a non, technically, this is a non-conforming structure. And so we'd be having to create a non-conforming, you know, right now it's a conforming structure, a conforming law, excuse me. We would be creating a non-conforming law. And so I guess the real, the real quacks, the real crux, you know, the question is, is do we feel that this is, you know, sufficient financial hardship? You know, if I was in the, if I was in the applicant's shoes, I would of course take the position that this is financial hardship. I, I thought I purchased two lots. That's not always in my understanding how the law cuts. And so I'm looking for a little feedback from the board here, particularly Jonathan, you know, your opinion. You know, you've been down this road a little bit more, for how you, how you view this. Given the financial hardship sort of component of this. I mean, it does look pretty clear that this was, you know, within a margin of error of the instruments of the time, which I think is material, but we do have better signs now. So I'm just curious what your, what your position is.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree that that, that margin of error is very small. The hardship, I mean, you could trim down the house. You take, you know, 2.8 inches off the house, which would be very expensive. You could move the house back, which would be very expensive. I don't, I don't see another solution. I mean, we have had a situation where an owner constructed a home, I believe it was on Maple Street, where the, the front yard setback was, it was, I think it was, the encroachment was more like in the area of five feet, the front porch. And we did not grant the variance in that case. I don't think that they made any changes to that home since then, but I see Chris has got his hand up, I'm sure he's got something to add.
And I, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands, this has nothing to do with the structure or the placement of the structure on the property. So the house conforms to, to the setbacks, all the dimensional requirements, the house would be conforming. The, the issue is that the dimension of the lot at that one particular line would be non-conforming. The thing that's strange about that is that it has no impact about where you could build a house or other thing. You know, that of all the dimensions that we require in our bylaw, that one is basically invisible by anybody driving by the house. You know, you could, you could have a lot that had, you know, only 100 feet of width, for example, and you'd never know because it doesn't have to do with where the house sits. It just, it's sort of an arbitrary dimension that, that, you know, we have only for lot shape. The other thing I was gonna say is, Terry, again, the surveyor, looked at whether the formerly labeled lot six, which is the property one to the south, had any land available to be able to, you know, give them a couple inches. It looks like their lot is exactly 200 feet wide at the street and is also exactly 200 feet wide at the setback. So they do not have any room to spare to be able to, to, you know, make some sort of a deal to make this work. So there's not really an option to, to correct it any other way.
Board members, I'm curious as to anyone else's questions or comments?
So let me just ask, Zach, does that then fall under the first reason to grant a variance because of the configuration of the particular premises?
So can you ask, ask that again, Jonathan? What were you asking, Jonathan?
Well, I was asking. Well, I was asking, uh, is this a situation where the the premises are such that the variance is warranted? It's an unusual situation.
Yeah.
But then are you, are you getting after, is this lot shape, topography or soil condition? Is that sort of where you're going with this? Which is, which is like the precursor to can we grant a variance?
Right.
Yeah, I would say it, it is a, 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 a function of lot shape. Which is unique to this property where the, the other ones that were part of this development met that requirement. It just happened that, that the, the shape of these lots is, is pinched in, if you can imagine, right? The, the, the back is a little bit narrower than the front, and that's why we have this dimensional irregularity. These particular lots.
So I guess, you know, what I'm trying to, just to work clear, what, what I'm trying to do is, is I'm trying to find a way to get to yes. But also our authority to grant variances for our own discretion is very limited. And so we have to establish a couple of elements, right? And so that's what I'm trying to establish for the record here so that we don't we don't look too discretionary. Uh, we can't just say it's close. We, we actually don't have the authority to say it's sort of close enough and let's just let it go, right? So that, that's the issue that, that I'm trying to work through, uh, here. And so I do think that, that based on, you know, the sort of lot conditions. And I would say, you know, the, the plans, were these registered plans or, or filed plans, Chris? I'm seeing you nodding yes.
Yes, those, those are from the registry deeds.
So.
It's not registered land, though.
No, their, their plot, their, their plans were filed.
Right.
Right. So the, these were approved subdivision plan, or they weren't subdivisions because they were under the A and R uh, part. So they were exempt from subdivision control. But this was an approved A and R plan in nineteen fifty-six, registered at the state registry. So this is accepted. And again, back in the fifties, you would have just built another house on lot four. And so there would currently be a house on that lot. And, um, it would, it, one of the two would be non-conforming. I don't know which one, but.
I mean, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to grant a, a variance on the basis of the uh, sort of lot shape. Uh, I, I think this is where I'm going. I mean, the, a variance should be granted based on the, the lot shape due to instrument error. And, and the financial hardship is based on reliance on filed plans with sort of, by certified uh, surveyors that were accepted. Does that sound about right, uh, Jonathan? And I see Chris nodding, but I'm looking for, I'm looking for the, I guess unfortunately the legal, the legal nod as well. I think that sounds right, but of course, you always like what you write yourself. So, um, you know.
Well.
And then I also just, I don't think there's going to be any harm to the public, uh, by approving, uh, the third law. So the three elements are you know, it's based on the unique sort of, you know, soil shape and topography, right? The unique shape and boundary of condition revealed by a survey is an unusual circumstance. Uh, there is some financial hardship and there's no harm to the public good. I, I think that we've, I think that we've created a record that we've met those elements here. And so I would move to grant the variance. Uh, saw the fact that the, you know, unique shape of, of, uh, unique shape and condition of the lot based on surveying standards and tools when it was originally, uh, approved. Uh, the hardship based on their reliance on these certified, uh, plans that were filed with the registry of deeds. Uh, and the fact that this doesn't appear to create any harm to the public. Based on the approval of this variance. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yes, I second that motion.
Great. Vote by roll, uh, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
Mr. Labby.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, your variance passes. Uh, thank you, uh, for your time this evening and good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. We have a petition to Phoenix Partners Greenwood Street LLC for a special permit under section two forty dash three point two point two seven to maintain a lower moderate income apartment at one forty-nine Washington Street. We also have the next petition uh, for, under the same, um, Sherburne bylaw for one forty-seven Washington Street, which is in a res B district. So I think we can hopefully combine those two discussions. Uh, I see Bob is here. And so Bob, I know, um, you know, you are the sort of resident expert of the esoteric regulations in town. So I am going to turn this over to you in a second, but my understanding is that, uh, for the rest of the board and the public is that this is a regulation around essentially an accessory, an affordable rental accessory dwelling unit that no, that has not really been tested uh, in town of, uh, to date. Uh, and Bob would like to deed restrict, um, for five years or more. Um, so the construction of some affordable rental ADUs. Bob, I'm going to turn this over to you to describe it better than I have if I am wrong and providing the additional color.
Sure. And, and I would start by saying that we, at least for the moment, still have Chris on the call. And I would say that Chris has a great deal of expertise, uh, in this space as well. And so I would encourage him to, uh, jump in with his thoughts, uh, agreeable to mine or not. Um, but you're right, uh, as far as I know. Um, this particular, uh, regulation has never been used uh, previously. And, and there's, there's kind of a reason um, that it's never been used. Um, but in any case, uh, it was probably put in either in the early two thousands, maybe even in the nineties. So it's been sitting there a long, long time. Um, and no one's ever used it. Um, so what, it's, it's, it's in the, uh, schedule of, of use regulations. That's fairly far down the list. And effectively what it says is that if a homeowner uh, is able, is granted a special permit, which is what I've, uh, uh, submitted an application for. Uh, if I'm granted a special permit, I can have the same twelve hundred square foot, uh, accessory dwelling unit that many of us have, including me, and I, I think many other folks have in town. Um, you're allowed to, uh, have, actually when I built mine, it was only, the, the town rule was eight hundred square feet, but it's now twelve hundred square feet. Um, and under, uh, the use regulation, much higher up the list, you can do that with a special permit. But you're required to live in either the ADU or the home. Okay. What this rule does is it effectively by special permit allows the applicant to have the same, uh, twelve hundred square foot, uh, unit on the property as the special permit. Uh, the other way of doing it, uh, would allow. Um, but in this case, it, it's, it's effectively a trade-off. If, um, if I agree to have it be an affordable unit and counting, and it would count in the, the, the town's, um, uh, subsidized housing inventory, which is the, the count that people are very focused on in town to get to ten percent on. Um, if, if I'm willing to do that, to, to rent it effectively at a discount and not only rent it at a lower price than market. But importantly, only rent it to people who are a bit income challenged. Uh, in other words, at um, their income does not exceed eighty percent of the, of the median income. Uh, not just in Sherbin, but in the kind of eastern region of Massachusetts. And what I get in return for being willing to rent it at the lower price and to a more limited group of families is I'm allowed to do that without living on the property. And that's, that's why this rule is different from the special permit that you issue so many of and that I actually have one myself. Um, so, um, and what I had, uh, written to, to you Zach was because I recognized you guys had never dealt with this before. So I thought I would at least take a crack at suggesting a way to do it. Um, and, and I'm, I'm here tonight because um, I want to know that this is possible before I actually build it, right? I don't want to build a twelve hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit and then have you say, no, you can't use it this way. So what I'm suggesting is that you agree to issue the special permit, but only upon six conditions. And I've written them out and those six conditions come right out of the zoning bylaw, right? In other words, they're what the zoning bylaw says you should require. Um, I can read them now if you like, or I can come back to it later. It's up to you.
Yeah, why don't you come, come back to it, I guess?
Sure. Yep. But the idea was when the, when the, the, when the town meeting passed this law, um, whenever it was in the nineties or the early two thousands. The idea in, to my way of reading it is that it was trying to create more affordable units in town. Um, and it was willing to offer a property owner, uh, the advantage of not having to live on the property in order to be able to have this twelve hundred square foot unit. So I think it was very intentional on the part of the, the folks who wrote it and then, uh, and then the, the town meeting attendees that night that voted for it. It has been, um, updated a few times as far as I can tell, but I think those updates were really more housekeeping and not material in any way. And maybe I should, uh, see what Chris has to say.
Great. Appreciate that, Bob. Thank you. Um, board members, any questions for the applicant before we, uh, go to our building inspector who has his hand raised?
Not yet.
Chris, thank you for staying on. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. Hi, Bob. I'll just give you a little history of what I, I think, uh, uh, how this got to be here. Um, not that it makes a huge difference. It, it exists in the bylaw. So this is, this is a viable thing that we can do. But our, um, our bylaw for a long time allowed housekeeping apartments. Okay. And that's what Bob was talking about. We had, originally they were eight hundred square feet. They were very restrictive. Um, you couldn't rent them. Um, they were meant for, you know, uh, people living on site that were, uh, you know, helping in the house, whatever it may be, family members, that kind of thing. But they weren't, weren't meant to be rentals. And so I believe that this uh, section of the bylaw was added pri- way prior to, uh, the, but the board changing our current apartment slash ADU section to allow, uh, rental. We did that in twenty eighteen. This came in, like Bob said, um, nineties, two, early two thousands-ish a, as a way to do a rental unit. Because we didn't have a way to do a rental unit. And so this was the only way that you could put in some sort of an accessory apartment that you could rent within the town for maybe twenty years. This was sort of the only option. Um, I don't think it was taken by anybody, but it existed as, as an option. Then, like I said, I think in twenty eighteen, the bylaw was updated to increase the size of the sort of normal special permit apartments that we do and to also allow them to be rented. So just so you guys have an understanding of how we sort of got where we got. So now we have these two parallel versions of, of an accessory apartment that you could have. You could, you can have that special permitted one up to twelve hundred square feet. Per the twenty eighteen bylaw update, you can also have this, uh, low to moderate income apartment. Um, and, and as Bob said, they're very similar. The, the main difference is that there's a lot of uh, legal requirements on the low to moderate income one to make sure that you follow the affordable housing um, practices and that you are renting it to the, to the right population of people. And so that the bylaw points you towards, um, seven sixty CMR fifty-six. Uh, whereas the other bylaw has, has, uh, uh, some specific to Sherbin requirements, like the residency of either one of the two units on the property. Um, so just so you guys understand what we're dealing with, it's, other than that, it's very similar kind of thing. They can be attached, they can be detached. There's, there's not really any kind of major difference between the two. So you know, you, you will have seen these type of units before. It just happens that this one has a, an, another layer of uh, you know, additional requirements on top of it. Um, you know, the one, the one thing that I would say is I have no problem with this at all. I think this is, you know, if, if the board goes and grants it, great. It's, it's, uh, you know, something that the bylaw lets, lets you do. Um, the one thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around is just how do we we'll have to have a renewal period, I guess, because I think this gives you a five-year window to do it. And obviously if, if it's not renewed, now what do we do? Now does it, it does, it's not going to revert back to the other kind. It's not going to automatically become like a special permitted apartment under the other section of, of the bylaw. So we need to make sure that our, one of our conditions on this thing is that, you know, the renewal be, be kept up or that uh, I believe this even has a clause in the bylaw that says, uh, it shall be designed in such a way that you could remove kitchen facilities or somewhat, something else to make it to unmake it an apartment.
And I, uh, Chris, just FYI, I offered up, um, and actually I copied you, Chris, on the email. Um, I offered up that, uh, condition that it built in such a way that it could be, could be changed. That the way I see it working is, uh, it could be, uh, an affordable unit forever and just renewed, you know, by special permit every five years or whatever, you know, pleases the, the board. Um, or I, I, I don't see why there would be any objection to moving the special permit from an affordable special permit to what is, I'm going to, it doesn't say this, but it's an owner occupied special permit, right? Um, and I don't see any reason why the board would object to that structure being one or the other. Uh, it gets tricky when it's neither. Um, and if it's neither, the kitchen has to go. I could see it being used as a home office. You know, I have that situation in my house where I have a kind of a separate home office building. Um, and so that wouldn't be, uh, unreasonable. The other, the last thing I would say uh, to the ZBA and to the community who might be interested. I really thought that this, these two lots were a really good place to do this because they're on Route sixteen, they're set way back from the road. Um, they are, you know, not close at all to any butters, other than my own properties, obviously. Um, whereas I wouldn't see this necessarily kind of fitting on Greenwood Street if, if, you know, to just kind of I, I try to put things where I feel like they belong. And I feel like this type of thing belongs more on Route sixteen than it does on Greenwood Street. And the Greenwood Street lots are more constrained also. Um, but you know, it, I, I thought about this and I thought about where it would make sense. And I thought these two lots on Route sixteen kind of, you know, within the context of the broader community, uh, would, would be a good spot for, to do this.
Bob, do you have a proposed, um, duration of the special permit? Uh, I mean, I know that the minimum is five years for the deed restriction. Um, but you would still have to get permits for everything else. So, you know, what was, what is your proposal for the duration?
So, uh, the, the way that I read the rule, I agree with you that there was, there needs to be an initial minimum five-year period. Um, it, the, the law allows you to do it in different ways. I think I would, um, prefer I, I don't love deed restrictions because they seem so permanent and they stay there forever. This law allows the applicant with your assent, obviously, to do it by contract, which is it's the same result and it's the same kind of, uh, requirement of me. And it would be of course enforced by the building inspector. Um, but I, you know, and then you're not kind of mucking up deeds and then lawyers out twenty years in the future don't understand and it, it, to me, I, I kind of prefer to avoid that kind of complexity. And it's not that I'm, don't want to be compliant. I will be one hundred percent compliant. It's just, um, if it only were to last five years and were to flip into the more typical uh, special permit type of situation, I think it'd be a lot better if we weren't unwinding a deed restriction, if we were just, um, letting a contract.
Now, I, I hear you on the deed restrictions. Is that a requirement of our regulation?
No, no. It, it says deed restriction or, uh, contract, or I don't have it right in front of me, but it gives you several different options. And I just like the less complicated option.
Yeah. And in terms of the, I'll have to look into this a little bit more.
Of course.
Restriction. Um, when you say contract, what are you proposing? Is that just us giving you a special by, by special permit? That's the contract that we're speaking?
The, the contract would create the terms by which I would use the uh, special permit, i.e., you know, that I'm meeting all the requirements in it. Basically, the contract would just spell out what's in your regulation. And I would sign saying that I, you know, by, uh, having the special permit, I will be compliant with all of your rules. It's just a
I guess the question is, just basic, and this is who, who are the, you know, basic contract contracts? Who are the parties? What's the consideration? How are we making sure that we? What's the consideration? How are we making sure that we have an enforceable contract, right? So is that between you and the town that you're suggesting that there's a contract?
Yeah, I, not being a lawyer, I couldn't tell you whether it would be, uh, the owner of the property and the town or the owner of the property and the ZBA or the ZBA acting for the town. I mean, I'm sure, uh, uh, counsel could, could advise this.
I don't, I don't know. So that's why I'm asking, Chris, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll give you what the bylaw says so you, you have a, get a grasp of exactly what the language is. Uh, the use restriction means a contract, deed restriction, condition of the special permit provided by this subsection or other legal instrument as may be required by the special permit granting authority. Uh, and as may be approved by the Office of Community Affairs and the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. So it gives you at least four options there.
Yeah, disjunctive. I mean, I, I would say that I, I, I'm, I seem to be, I would be comfortable with just the conditions in the special permit, but I, I would, uh, I want to get my board feedback on that. Um, Chris, do you have something else to comment or is your hand just still raised?
Well, and I'll put it down, but I will say, uh, I, I'm just reading the, uh, the inner workings of this, I think the, um, the initial issuance of the special permit is for a two-year period with additional two-year periods to be granted by renewal. So even though there's a, a five-year minimum of the, uh, affordable, uh, nature of the, of the thing, um, you know, there's, the, the actual special permit will expire prior to that without renewal.
Yeah. And I, I would say that the five years starts when, you know, it exists and is, it is sort of rented, right? So.
Maybe from occupancy, you know, from, from, from grant, certificate of occupancy would be the start of that five year. Yeah.
Right. So I think we have to add a condition that speaks to that, uh, from the five to Bob.
Well, so, so Zach, I, I thought about that and what the, the way that, what I kind of suggested in my email was that, uh, tonight, or if you table it till another meeting, that's fine too. Um, but when you actually take a vote, the vote would not, the vote would be to that the board would issue the special permit upon my meeting all of the requirements that are, uh, described and receiving a certificate of occupancy. And, and that's, that would trigger the actual issuance of the permit and then the five-year clock would start. That's how I saw it.
And I, I, I think I would rather just issue, vote to issue you a permit that allows you to go get your occupancy with an affordable, you know, that, that, to me, it seems like the most, we're just going to issue you a permit for two years and you come back to us in two years and most likely you've built something in two years and, uh, you're either going to come back to us in two years before that period and say, you, you're living there, right? And you want the other special permit or you sold the house and somebody else wants the other type of special permit and you're going to replace it, or you're going to say, this continues, right? So I think, I think procedurally, we would issue you a special permit now for two years and you come back to us and hopefully it's built and hopefully we just renew it. I think that makes sense to me.
Um, I'm fine with that as well. Yeah.
Okay. Um, board members, any questions or comments?
Well, I don't understand the obstacle to creating affordable housing in this instance. That, that doesn't, it seems to avoid a lot of complication.
To, to approve this avoids a lot of complications, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, it seems to be a viable path. I mean, I have no objection to, um, providing a special permit or an affordable rental unit. Um, is there any, any other board members', um, thoughts or concerns? And I want to go to the public and seek their, uh, comment as well. I was hearing anything from the board. So is there any members of the public that have any questions, uh, or concerns around a special permit? Um, Ms. Doyle?
Hi, I just want to make sure I don't know enough about the rules to, on what counts on the SHI. And it's like, I'm not against what Bob's doing. I just want to make sure the town's protected, that this really will count on our SHI unit. Um, yeah, I'm looking, you know, trying to look, everything has always been deed restricted or legal instrument. And they, you know, they say the purpose is so that it does not revert back to a market rate unit. So I'm just concerned and I would love to get, you know, even reach out to the state or get the feedback. Will a special permit meet their criteria to allow us to count it on an SHI? So unless Jonathan and you guys know more, I'd be happy to hear it.
No, that's a, that's a very good point and, and a good, a good question. Um,
It certainly, the, the, um, the, um, I want to call it legislation, but the, the law certainly implies that it needs to, right?
Right.
In other words, it, and therefore I'm assuming that it's written in a way that is compliant. I mean, it effectively, the law says it, you need to do it in a way that gets it on the SHI. That was the whole point of it.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think, I think I, I, I would be inclined, I, I, I'm inclined to say, yeah, I'm inclined to vote yes myself, but I do think Heidi brings up a valid point. And I think that it's something council should opine on just to make sure that we all uh, have, uh, correct assumptions and expectations as we vote to sort of proceed. And I hear you on the deed restrictions, um, but if that is, if that's what's necessary for, for the housing, uh, inventory, I do think that that's, you know, the direction we would go. Um, so I think-
Yeah, to, to be honest, if it meant it was going to be uh, deed restricted in perpetuity, I don't think I would do it. I-
No, I don't, I don't think it would do, I don't, I, I don't see that it would be that. Um, but I, I do think that, um, it would have to be deed respect, deed restricted with some sort of rejection mechanism, which I don't know what that would be, right? So I think I just need to, I need to, to get a little bit clearer understanding legally, just to make sure that, uh, one, we understand if we have to have a deed restricted to meet S, SHI and two, um, that there is a, a, you know, viable lever for, for you to eject or for the subsequent owner to reject from that restriction if they so choose.
Sure.
Uh, which includes removal of the kitchen potentially or obtaining another special permit. So I just want to make sure, um, you know, we, we don't have some sort of hang up there. So.
Yeah. I can also have Paul take a look at it and let me, let us know and, you know, we-
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, you know, we, we appreciate any, um, you know, uh, letters that Paul sends us. So, um, no, that's helpful. Thank you, Heidi, for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Um, I think, so my, my predilection here would be to table this until another meeting, Bob, if that's, uh, good for you and sort of get some more information on those sort of fine points.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So, um, we will continue. I don't think we have to set a date for continuance, but I think we'll just set it for the next, uh, meeting, which um, probably will be somewhat soon. Uh, is that right? Uh, Gene?
Um, it, I would think September. I do have, uh, two, three special perm, or three findings that I have ready for your next meeting.
What is that?
Uh, one is 156 South Main, one is 81 Prospect and one is 30 North Main.
Oh, no, we have, we don't have another meeting.
We do, you have not set another meeting. No.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda, thank you, Gene, is, uh, continuation of the public hearing um, of Washington Street Sherborne Homes LLC for a comprehensive permit uh, pursuant to master and law chapter 40B. Um, I think that, um, Bob, did we get conservation and Board of Health comments?
I got Board of Health comments this morning.
Morning. Um, and I have not had a chance to look at them. And so, um, I guess the question is, do we want to continue this for, you know, two weeks or three weeks and then address both the special permits and the continuation of this?
Um, well, I mean, we, we could, uh, um, I'm, I'm prepared to address them tonight. Um, and, um, I don't think they're terribly complicated. Um, and we could also kind of close out, or what I would refer to as close out Steve's uh, work.
Yeah, so an update, yeah, so just an update for the group. Uh, our peer reviewer has come back, uh, with some, uh, feedback on uh, what, what topic, I think it was, uh, it was Septic and-
The Septic, the driveway. There were, there was a whole series of fairly minor issues that, um, we, that we all went through last time.
Yep.
And then we went and did a, a revision and Steve was great. I, uh, he turned around his comments in about 24 hours. Um, and, um, you know, I, I suffice it to say, I think we are on the same page with, uh, Tetra Tech at this point and kind of ready to, to close it. Uh, you know, I think Tetra Tech is satisfied and we're satisfied. Um, you know, we, we did what is the best way to do it, which it's, it's a collaborative process. We go back and forth a couple of times and get, uh, get to a place where everybody's, uh, comfortable that it's a good project. Um, the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission are, um, coming a little late, but I am willing to go through those uh, comments fairly quickly and at least get you, you know, to what needs to be thought about, right? Um, there's, uh, on the Board of Health side, it's, it's one major, uh, thing, which, um, uh, you won't be surprised that I'll push back on tonight. Um, and on the CONCOM side, I think we're reasonably close, but there are some kind of issues to, to go through. Um, and, you know, a handful of things that I don't think will take very long. So if the board's up for it, I'd love to kind of, you know, move things forward a little bit tonight at least, um, because I feel like we're now to the point where we can define all the remaining issues.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Bob. Uh, so is, is Steve here? I don't think.
Steve is here. Yeah.
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Um, you want to go through your, uh, latest letter to us and the feedback on the points and just sort of give us the highlight reel? That would be helpful.
Yeah, as Bob mentioned, uh, you know, a lot of our comments were, were, were addressed. Uh, we did recommend five conditions, which we added to the beginning of our letter, uh, to kind of make it easier on you to, to kind of formulate those. Um, regarding the site distance at the driveway, it did require, you know, vegetation removal in the, in the right-of-way. Um, and, and some of that area actually goes into CONCOM jurisdiction. So we, we recommended that, you know, the applicant coordinate with conservation and DPW just to, to confirm if they, you know, if they need to file a, you know, um, anything with, with CONCOM for that removal. Um, again, it's just minor, minor items that, you know, condition two is just revising the, the, uh, the tree removal, uh, limits and erosion control lines and things like that. Uh, we did recommend, uh, a, a construction management plan be provided, uh, provide, prior to commencement of construction. Um, and then a, a test pit be provided at the proposed rain garden location, because that is a recharge BMP. So we just wanted to confirm soils and, and groundwater at that location. Uh, and then finally, you know, um, the, the project would require NIPD's CGP. So, uh, we recommended, you know, providing proof of coverage under that prior to, uh, prior to construction. But overall, a lot of the items have been, have been dealt with.
Great. Um, are there any particular points of concern that you think the board should be aware of as we're thinking about conditions, Steve?
No, no real concern. Um, you know, again, it's just the, the, the site distance uh, item is the more, I get, I, I guess it would be the it not concerning, but you know, we should kind of deal with that with, uh, with conserva, the applicant will deal with that conservation. So.
Yeah, the good news on that, uh, front.
Sorry, Bob, just to clarify, we said this, you mean the proximity to the wetlands? Is that what you're talking about, Steve?
Yeah, there was some clear, so the site distance triangle, basically the clearing within the right-of-way goes into CONCOM jurisdiction. Um, so we had asked just to coordinate with, with CONCOM. I don't know if this board would actually have to condition that, but, uh,
No, I think, you know, um, generally we wouldn't impose, um, environmental conditions unless there is a a, a particular health and safety concern that I think that we could find a nexus to a co, you know, a conserva, a local conservation standard. Um, which, uh, at the moment I'm not seeing, I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything, um, there, but, um, you know, that, that would be sort of the basis in my understanding is this is sort of how we would, um, incorporate a CONCOM, uh, perspective into our conditions. Um, so.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify, Zach, the, the sightlines, which we're now showing on the plan and you have, um, uh, I went out and walked the site, uh, fairly carefully, very carefully on Route 16. Um, and, uh, was, I'm pleased to report that within the sightlines that are called out, there were no, I, I, I'm not even sure I saw any small trees, um, much less any big trees. Uh, it was all just very, very light brush. Um, the place where Steve is alluding to that gets into CONCOM's jurisdiction is if you're standing on, uh, Washington Street and you're looking at the driveway. It's to the left of the driveway and there's a, um, uh, there's a, a steel guardrail on the road there and the area that would be in CONCOM's jurisdiction is kind of, in other words, it's cleared to the guardrail. So to the extent it was necessary for us to kind of, uh, or it really wouldn't be us, it would be Sean, frankly. Um, that's not something we would do. Um, but Sean could just, and in fact, Sean may well do this anyway in this area. Um, just because it's, it's Route 16 and it needs to be kept back for obvious safety reasons. Um, so this activity is something that, that Sean does all over town, right? Where he just pushes the edge of the road back a little bit. Um, and in fact, um, all of the sightline is in the town right-of-way. The sightline doesn't come back onto kind of what would be considered my property. Uh, it's all in the town right-of-way.
Thanks, Bob. Um, is there, um, anyone from, see Michael's here. Michael, did you, did we have CONCOM comments that came in late or no, just Board of Health?
No, we, we, our comments were sent in yesterday or Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Was it some, two sets of, uh, additional comments uh, to the first set? Um, I didn't notice, I guess, right, I can't, I, I'm not sure which letter it is from Tetra Tech about the, uh, sight lines issue of what is expected to be cleared, but, uh, but I could believe that if we're just talking about some brush in the right-of-way, that that's probably not going to be, uh, much of an issue there. Um, I don't know how many square feet we're talking about even.
Uh, not, not many, Michael. It's-
Yeah, it's a, it's a very minor, it's very minor clearing. And as Bob said, you know, there's no, I don't believe there's any trees through there. So, um,
Right.
You know, we, we had just noted the line going through the, through the setback, I mean, the, uh, the buffer zone line. So we just noted it.
Yeah, no, especially if it's not any trees being cut in the buffer zone there. And I assume it's, yeah, I can't remember. Whether you're talking even outer or inner buffer, probably outer buffer zone. Um, I would think that that's a fairly minor issue.
And, and Michael, we wouldn't even need to, we basically need to, much the same way that, uh, Eversource comes through and tops things. We would kind of need to come through and top a little bit of brush above the guardrail.
Right, yeah. That's, I think, the least of our issues.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, and is anyone here from the Board of Health, uh, to discuss their comments?
Yes, I'm here.
We have to share. We're away, we're traveling.
Oh. Hey, Daryl.
Hi.
Um, so thank you for sending the comments. Uh, unfortunately, I did not get a chance to look at them, so, uh, I don't know what we're talking about. So if you could give us the highlight reel, uh, that would be helpful.
All right, uh, I'll just get my laptop. Um, so at our August 20th meeting, we did discuss these points and, um, Bob was able to attend, so he did, uh, have a little advance, uh, compared to the letter that went out. We are operating on first in, first out. At the moment, we have a lot of things going on at the Board of Health. So, uh, and the letter that we sent, I'm not going to go into all the details because some of the details are there for your use should you need them. In general, the um, waiver request for, uh, the sewage disposal section was basically all of the requirements except for four that are fairly standard plan requirements, et cetera. We did not, the board did not recommend waiving all of the requirements of that section. We did go through to see what would be required since they were not identified by the applicant and there, as you know, in Sherborne, we require- There, as you know, in Sherborne, we require five feet to groundwater. And for the test pits on the site and for the location where the septic is planned. I believe about two point seven feet, don't hold me to that, is about the um most shallow portion. And it doesn't, it's not that much above groundwater in other locations within the area. For the leaching field. Uh, so. At the moment, as we know, it's not, as far as we know from the data we have, it's not possible to cite compliant. Septic system uh for Sherborne's regulations. However, so and the board doesn't recommend that because we do believe it's important. To the quality of groundwater, and I can explain that if you would like, but I think you have heard it before, so save you unless you want to ask.
Uh, no, I appreciate that, Daryl. And and just to confirm, uh, you have issued a Title V permit for this. Not comply with our local regulations. That is where, that is what we were sort of discussing and.
Right, so under Title V, the system. Can meet the four feet of separation required by the state, but that's because the state permits the use of. The special sewer gravel essentially, uh, a spec for it. It, the purpose of that is to allow effluent to travel down and make sure, since you're making a mound. To not have it break out the sides. So that's the intent of that. It does not do a good job of treatment. That's what we're concerned about. But however, the board discussed that if the ZBA was inclined to grant a waiver to the five foot of separation and. In naturally occurring soil, which tends to be far better at treating. That. That we'd prefer to see that the mound reach the five feet of separation. Frankly, more is better. Would you be happier drinking? Effluent that went through a single coffee filter or many plus granular activated carbon plus the. Biota in the soils that can also help treat, so. The more, the better is our perspective on that. That's the short version. And then there's a somewhat related one eight point zero two, but I think it's better left to you reading it. Being able to read it and ask questions. And on the water supply. Uh, again. Basically asked for a waiver of all requirements except for well abandonment and other use provisions. We don't recommend a blanket waiver to all. X, but for six point zero G, there is acceptable because the private well setbacks. Are more protective than. The calculation that we had and number of wells, they are only proposing one. But we just want to highlight that irrigation wells are not permitted in town and therefore we didn't want. The project to have the expectation of that at some point in future. And same as we've done before with the EHIR requirements and requirements in. The projects other than just a single family home, essentially. We do recommend a waiver because there's a section in our regs that we meant to take out, but by the time we got to public hearing, it was too late to delete that. So it's in there, but we have asked that you waive it in the past. And that's under three point one. And bedrock disruption, there is, you know, there has been refusal at parts in that property. And in that area appears to be shallow bedrock potentially or just boulders. But should bedrock be found and have to be removed? We think that the relatively minor um. Requirements for alerting neighbors to that activity is worth doing. And also same for earth removal standards, the presence of the soils on site are important for filtering all waters. Storm waters, rainwater, septic, anything else, and is important to the quality of water in town. And then we had recommendations, as we've done before. About shared systems, both for water supply and septic that. Uh, we'd like to see that the fiscal and procedural assurance mechanisms for the operation and maintenance of those systems are in place. In the um typically in the condo association documentation and that that be reviewed. If if required and presented.
Great, thank you, Daryl. Bob, do you have any specific point you want to address? Before I sort of ask the board for their questions and feedback.
Sure, so a- at this point, we've designed a very good system. It has been approved by the board under Title V. Um, and we have been able to just stay out of the. Uh, the inner buffer zone, the fifty foot uh buffer zone uh to the wetlands. Uh, by the design of that system. Um, it's all done, it's been reviewed by Steve and by Tetra Tech. And it's in very good shape. I think at this late hour. Uh, to ask us to go back and to redesign the system at substantial cost. Is not appropriate. I, um, you know, Daryl often says that, you know, more is better. And I guess more is better, but it comes at a cost, it comes at a cost to the people living in the homes. It comes, it it comes at a cost to the aesthetics, it comes at a cost to getting further into the. Uh, you know, the wetland buffer zone. Um, and I have never, I've asked many, many times, and I've never been given. Any scientific evidence or review that of this concept that beyond four feet is better. And in fact, if you, just today, this afternoon, I went around to a few towns. Board of Health who do septic systems, Dover, Holliston, Ashland, Millis, Lincoln. You know, Carlisle, none of them require five feet. Now, in Sherbon, all the kids are above average and we're different, I guess, but I don't, I want to see science. And the law is. Um, under state law, the requirement is that a board of health can make more restrictive rules about. Uh, septic, so in other words, layer on more restrictive rules regarding Title V. If they do that, they're required by law to provide the science behind that. The necessity of having that, in this case, additional foot. To my knowledge, and I've asked the Board of Health repeatedly over many years, to provide the science associated. With that additional uh restrictive regulation beyond Title V. I've never been given the science and Daryl has come to us tonight.
Okay, Bob, Bob, I think I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to just sort of timeout for a second. The the history that's sort of not relevant to this, so.
Well, but it's relevant, the law is.
Listen, I I I hear, I hear your frustration with the local standards. That we are, we are, we're here to sort of talk about her particular points around this particular project, sort of not, not the history and the validity of the standards. Generally, I I I am not.
The validity of the standards matter, right?
I I agree, but I have to presume, I have to presume they're valid and and I also have to adhere to. You know, the standards that, as you know, as you know, and Paul knows, uh, we we have to adhere to and and sort of what hack. Looks to what's enforceable, so I I don't want to get into a debate about the local standards being valid or not. You know, they are.
Just asking for, I'm asking for.
They are presumptively valid until they are proven unfortunately invalid, right? And so I think what you're articulating is a case. To sort of argue that they're invalid and I, you know, I I'm not going to opine on that. And and I think that we shouldn't hear either. I think the standard that we, the board has to apply from my understanding of the law is Title V standard again. If there are particular nuances about this project. Um, that require a a deeper consideration of a local standard connected to a health and safety concern. You know, we 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 have some discretion and we can obviously fight that fight, we, you know, with you if we need to and and impose that condition if we feel it is necessary. Uh, to approve the project. I don't, I don't know how the board feels about the additional foot um being necessary to approve the project, given that we have a Title V permit in hand. But I I haven't gotten to the board, to the board yet, uh, so. Um, and I see that Daryl is is um, we're, you know, uh, raising our hand the old fashioned way, which I appreciate as well. So we're going to go to Daryl first is to close her thoughts and then we'll go to my my board if you don't mind, Bob.
Uh, actually, I don't need. I could have a lot to say about that, but I don't think now is the time. Uh, I raised my hand because I thought you were asking how the board felt about that extra foot. I thought you meant Board of Health. Clearly, we greatly prefer it.
Of course.
We have science and we have reasons, long standing history, and it is not an uncommon requirement in Massachusetts, so.
Love to get the science.
Understood, and and Bob and you and Daryl can can hash it out in a different form, but it's not going to be here. Uh, at least on this particular, at least, at least on this project. Uh, because it seems fairly straightforward to me, but but that's my perspective and we haven't done deliberations yet, so. Uh, board members, any particular questions or concerns um to the to the co-chair of the Board of Health or to the applicant? Um, on, you know, this extra foot of height uh for the septic that we are talking about.
Well, uh, thank you. I I would like to see. Bob respond in writing to what the Board of Health has said. I'd like to see what the Board of Health says in writing in response to Bob. And then meet on this at this future meeting we've discussed where hopefully we're going to wrap everything up. We're not going to do it tonight.
That's great, Jonathan. Thank you. I like that idea.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, Mr. Labby, Mr. Callahan, anything from you?
No, nothing additional to add. I think that's a reasonable and pragmatic approach that. Uh, Mr. Fitch has proposed, makes a lot of sense to me as well.
Uh, Bob, if there's any other substantive matter on the agenda, uh, we'll, let's address it otherwise, otherwise, let's pick hopefully our final meeting. Uh, for deliberation on this uh application and. Michael, uh, one hand, we have a hand raised.
Well, Bob, go first. I think it would be good to address the bigger issue on uh for the Conservation Commission comments.
Yeah, go ahead, please go ahead, Michael, if there's.
Since Bob said he was game to uh to tackle that tonight, or at least start to tackle, let's put it that way. The uh.
We have a hard stop in seven minutes because uh we've got some kid coverage issues, so.
I can give Michael a lot of agreements on uh his, some of his points and then I want to debate some others, so.
Yeah, we could, we could, I can give you five more minutes uh or eight more minutes, Michael, or we can continue to next time. It's up to you.
Either way, I guess the uh.
Michael, how about the idea that Jonathan suggested, which is that we go at it in uh written form?
It's, it's, it's easier obviously for us in in writing their opinions, reading, to have writing.
I'd love to do that. I I can take comment, your comments, Michael, and respond to them in writing to the board and we can pick it up in. Uh, then at the next meeting. I I'm great.
If there's a, and again, if there's a particular point you'd like to discuss, we would happy to hear, hear the nuances that may not be. Able to be conveyed in writing, but um. It's much easier for me to look at the writing and not have to rewatch the videos as we're dealing with these opinions, so um, appreciate the right.
No, we could do that there, just a matter of the 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 work. The trickier issue of the proposed planting plan. Um, is that it's particularly important to try to do parts of that at the ZBA comprehensive permit level. As opposed to the fact that they have to still come to us for a little bit later, so that's the, that's the importance of uh. Uh, of these, of that issue um at this time, which we can go into that next week, the next time.
Appreciate that, and I I agree, uh, I think we could.
Yeah, I, Zach, I do want to point out to the board what I sent to you this afternoon, which is precedent for this issue that Michael just raised.
Yeah, and just to, just to educate the public and and, you know, in the past. Uh, the ZBA has deferred to uh state conservation standards and not imposed particular. Uh, conservation, you know, condition, conservation related conditions, but again, I want to give the board the discretion to decide. Whether they feel there's a particular health and safety risk uh that needs by. Uh, a a condition related to con, to to uh the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, so. That's, that's my position there.
Yeah, I would just say that, right, we have to make the point that. That, given the groundwater issues that this kind of, the planting plan issue, which is the major one. That has some value in terms of uh groundwater uh drifting.
And Michael, we're, we're definitely going to work with you on the planting plan. You said in your meeting the other night, I reviewed the tape. That you were willing to negotiate, so I'm I'm willing to negotiate as well, and I think we can find a a good. Uh, middle ground and and to plant some, to plant some things and and I'm I'm willing to do that for sure. The tree clearing limit that you brought up, I am going to push back on that. Uh, in that I want the lawn to be available at the tree clearing limit that we showed you. Because I don't want to make tiny, tiny little backyards for these folks and that's.
Okay, this is what I guess we're gonna have to go at.
We're, we're almost at, we're almost at time, so. A meeting, uh, selecting a date for the next meeting. Looks like I actually might be another, another fall of litigation for me, so I might be busy. Uh, in the next few weeks, so um, what about? The week of. September. I would say the week of the fifteenth, can we do the week of the twenty second? Sometime in the week of the twenty second, or should we do?
Yes, the the week of the twenty second, uh, I guess the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth, maybe.
No, it's the twenty fourth at seven PM. Does that work for board members and Bob for you?
It does not work for me, so, but you can do it without me.
Okay, um, is that, is that going to be okay for you for minutes, Jean, or would you prefer to be present or do you watch the videos?
Somebody can start it, somebody can share it, somebody can do whatever, or we can do the twenty fifth, but I can't do the twenty fourth.
What's the twenty fifth at seven?
Yeah, I I unfortunately, Zach, I can't do, I have a all day board thing on the twenty fifth. The twenty fourth does work if that's okay.
Okay, it's all yours.
All right, twenty fourth, board members, uh, any objections? Nothing, I hear nothing, I see nothing, so. Um, so I'm going to move to continue the hearing of um the comprehensive permit for. Uh, the. What is the address on Washington Street, Bob? Remind me?
Honestly, I don't remember Lot Three.
Lot Three on Washington Street uh for comprehensive permit. I motioned to continue that until the twenty fourth at seven PM. Do I have a second? Great, uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
I.
Mr. Uh, Labby.
I.
Callahan.
I.
Mr. McBride, I will continue this hearing until the uh twenty fourth, seven PM, September twenty fourth, seven PM.
I have a quick question. Do you want the other three, uh, the new petitions on there also?
Yeah, let's do that first. Uh, we'll get to this hopefully very quickly. And we'll also do the meeting minutes from the last meeting um and this meeting. So uh, we'll skip the the meeting minute approval for this time because Keith has some. Chauffeuring to do, so uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move to adjourn.
Seconded, uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
I.
Mr. Labby.
I.
Mr. Callahan.
I.
Mr. McBride, I, meeting is adjourned. We'll see you all on the twenty fourth at seven PM. Thank you, everyone.